I'd like to call this meeting to order. 4:35. In conference room, county administration building on Center Street, Chatham, Virginia. Go call Mr. Cluster.
Mr. Barber.
Here.
Mr. Blackstock.
Present.
Mr. Farmer.
Here.
Mr. Scare.
Here.
Mr. Warren.
Here.
Dr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Davis.
Present. Do we have any items to be added to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add an item from our solid waste committee meeting, land authorization to solicit out of the county solid waste for our work session and move it to the top of the agenda, which will make it 5A1.
Are there any other items to be added to the agenda? Hearing none? Anybody on board here?
I do, sir.
Okay. Are you okay?
No, sir.
I hadn't had anybody made a motion yet, so...
Yeah, I made a motion.
Oh, you made the motion, okay. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Warren. We have a second by Mr. Scare.
No, Mr. Barber.
Mr. Barber.
I can't, I can't.
Okay, pardon me. Do we have any discussions? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote, and Mr. Scare, I'll ask for yours right away.
I will vote yes.
If they're in fact, I will now close the vote.
Thank you. Unanimous? Thank you. For the citizens' convenience, all work sessions and committee meetings are now being recorded and can be viewed on the same YouTube location as the board supervises business meetings. Please remember that the board's work session is assigned for internal board and county staff communication, discussion, and work. It is not a question-and-answer session with the audience. Accordingly, during the work session, no question or comments from the audience will be entertained. Respectfully, any outburst or disorderly conduct from the audience will not be tolerated and may be result in the offending person's removal from the work session. As a reminder, all county citizens and other appropriate parties are and as designated by the board's bylaws are permitted to make comments under the hearing of the citizens' section of tonight's business meeting. Presentations, 5A1. Mr. Hicks, I believe it is, correct?
We spent...
I thought we... Pardon me? Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none?
Please cast your vote. Mr. Scare, I ask for yours right away.
He's got me up, I think.
Okay. All right, if they've been cast, I'm now closing the vote.
That's unanimous. Now, Mr. Hicks.
Okay, we spent about an hour at the solid waste committee meeting. We started at 3:30 this afternoon discussing how races of landfill and the possibility of the county accepting waste from Bedford. Has a proposal out on the street and Mr. Butch Joyce, if you haven't, I've met him. He's our current engineer that we started working with July 1st. Then we've had him run a bunch of numbers on the future impact that would have on the landfill and your revenue potential. So I'm going to turn it over to him at this time and give you a presentation in that option. You take...
You want to come?
Okay. Good afternoon. That I haven't mentioned. In talking with Richard and David about the future capacity of your landfill, that's kind of where we started with this discussion is what kind of volume and life do you currently have in your landfill? Some of the members of the board saw this. Those of you who weren't here, I gave this and I was holding up. That's okay, so everybody can see it. But in summary, what I said is that... To orient everyone, this is the entrance to the landfill, the scale house, the office and maintenance buildings are right here. You drive back through, this is the old landfill, the old closed area. This area here is called Phase Two, and it's the current active area of the landfill. And then just to the east of that is what we're using now as a borrow area, and that's referred to as Phase Three of the landfill. And then here's the gas line right of way. You own acreage, a large tract of land over here, and I'll call that south of the gas line, future disposal area. So what I told the committee earlier is that when I look at big picture, future volume that you have here in the county, I'll look at all four of these areas. And in Phase Two right now, this is partially closed. This is Area A or Cell A. Cell B is active. Cell C is unconstructed, so we can go there and dispose. So we still have capacity here. We have future expansion capacity here, so we've got one, two, three, four areas. All right? Those four areas, I told the board earlier, has approximately 10 million cubic yards or 6 million tons of capacity there. And at your current annual disposal tonnage rate of 42,000 tons per year, that life of those all four areas is approximately 140 years of life. Okay? So that's big picture. In terms of the existing active area, all right, so you have a DEQ permit right here for this Phase Two area. When we go beyond here into Phase Three, south of the gas line, or back to this old area here, we would have to go back and amend this permit, add these two, get additional DEQ permits. So if we, in this Phase Two area, if we just maintain our current 42,000 tons a year of waste going to that area, the area B, our Cell B area, I said that was about, that was about seven years, about, I said five to seven years of life there. And then this area C or Cell C is about 20 years of life, okay? At 42,000 tons a year, the current tonnage. The question about Bedford, so Bedford, we are using an estimate of about an additional 40,000 tons a year, so doubling what's going into Pittsman County landfill right now from 42 to 82, all right? So that essentially would cut this time in half, give us about three years here and give us about 10 years to finish out that whole Phase Two area. So I'll stop there and just ask our entertaining questions that any of you all have.
It actually gives 13 years, wouldn't it? Three and 10 off of the second.
Seven and 10.
Right, right. Well, yeah, three here and 10 here are 13, yes, sir, for B and C.
Dr. Miller and Mr. Farmer, what was mentioned was that the net capital would give us enough money to pay for the closing and opening of those two savings. And because the money is being generated by $120 solid waste being there, it's just covering operational costs. So if we don't do this, we're going to have to pull the money somewhere else. So it would eliminate the possibility of a tax increase for this project.
How soon is the Bedford option? When would that start?
July 1st, 2020.
When you're out.
When you're out.
And I'm being to do this Friday. We don't have to submit either, but they want to know what our cost per ton we're doing. So that...
I bet you've got numbers on the cost per ton.
So we pushed it to the work session with the possibility, pushed it to the meeting tonight so we can give staff and the authorization to at least investigate that possibility.
Okay?
Okay. Any questions?
So we're going to ask that the agenda of the seating be amended so the full board can direct staff to pursue, let's just say, out of county solid waste up to 55,000 tons a year.
Okay, we put that on the matter from...
I prefer at this point that we just do the Bedford so that the board has a control over it, because there's some citizens that are going to have some questions.
Okay. So solicit out of county waste?
We don't want the room, but to get out, we're going to take New York's trash.
Yeah.
Were we contacted, or do we seek this out?
Any further questions? So we're going to place this on the agenda, council? Yes. All right, no further questions. Thank you, Mr. Joyce.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Nice.
Pleasure, sir.
Thank you for being here tonight. Have a safe trip back, please. Next item, presentation. Troy Simpson with the Institute of Advanced Learning Research. We'll discuss the Board of Go Virginia robot grant match funding request.
If you don't mind me, you've got to break into direction. Mr. Simpson is the director of advanced manufacturing for the institute and Institute of Advanced Learning Research in Danville. The first time I worked with Mr. Simpson and actually Angela Bigley with the school system was on the precision machining program. And it was an extremely enjoyable, interesting experience to see them coming up with the curriculum, matching it with our career technical center, working on dual credits. And I think it's proved very successful and has brought a lot of attention to this area. Even back then, there was a discussion about precision machining and welding were the first identified needs, but what's next? What's the next thing coming after that? And in touring the career technical center, it was clear back then that the IT program just didn't measure up to the modern day standards. So we moved in with precision machining, mechatronics kind of followed that with the career technical center. And we identified back then, the next big thing would be every factory that comes into this locality is automated. So you've got automation, robotics, and you've got IT. These were the next things that need to focus on. Well, years later, this has rolled around, and Mr. Simpson's been involved in a very large grant opportunity to focus on these next things. And I think he's here to talk to us about the status of that grant and how the county can participate.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity and little bit of updates on where we're at, what some of that funding opportunities are, what some of the shortfalls are, and how this will impact Pittsman County schools. As you're well aware, the, it's a very aggressive approach we took to pathway development. And some of this has been some lessons we've learned, we've traveled to Europe and looked at what some of the school systems are doing there. We made quite a few visits to Ohio. We've been looking at those regions of the country that's been highly successful in economic development, South Carolina, Indiana. And when we start to walk into schools, it becomes very apparent why they're so competitive. It's because of the amount of investments they've made in career development pathways. We've just added, I don't know how many of you are aware, but Chatham Middle School was just one of the first beta sites for career connections. Career connections is a brand new model that we've pretty much brainstormed and developed. Angela Bigley and her team took a tremendous role in leading this. Probably one of the most exciting programs that we've been engaged in a long time, where we're actually putting applied learning and technology in middle school students' hands to continue to develop the pathway starting in middle school all the way through advanced learning at the institute. The expansion, as Greg mentioned earlier, is really focused on robotics and automation, IT network encoding, cybersecurity, and the career connections model to take, to put that into all schools in the regions. The update says that funding sources that we sought out with regard to how do we fund these programs in the county and city and region, we turned to Danville Regional Foundation, and they were very fortunate. Clark Castillo traveled with us to Ohio, Dr. Jones from Pittsman County, Dr. Jones from Danville City, myself, Dr. Sizemore, and Clark Castillo went to Ohio and spent two days going in middle schools and career technical centers, looking at best practices when it comes to the world of automation. Ohio invested in 24 schools out there, about $500,000 in 24 schools in each school to start teaching robotics and automation in the high schools. So that's what we're competing against when we compete for these jobs in the industry. It's become very apparent in that trip, Clark says, you all submit to me a planning grant and go out and discover what is it going to take for us to be competitive in our region when it comes to workforce training. So we've gone about two years into that. We looked at funding sources. Go Virginia, the Danville Regional Foundation asked us to come together as a region to identify how we would do this, not as individual silos, but how Danville Public Schools, Pittsman County Schools, Danville Community College, and the institute would work together to develop these programs and pathways that starts in middle school all the way through that. So we submitted the grant to the Danville Regional Foundation to require some matches, about $5.6 million to start looking at funding this. Go Virginia was coming online to competitive grant at that time. We sought that funding to be the matching dollars. Go Virginia required matching dollars. DRL reviewed that we will seek the matching dollars, and they required us to seek matching dollars to match the Danville Regional Foundation funding. And then that partners the commitment that each of our partnering institutions would make with regard to these programs. So in a robotics and automation initiative, the funding that we have received with Pittsman County for robotics and automation is through the Danville Regional Foundation and through Go Virginia. These two grants have been approved as contingencies on securing the matching dollars, because they're looking at the grant as holistic of everything that includes not just one program. So we wrote into the grant for Pittsman County Schools $357,000, requested $331,000 matched from Go Virginia, what total spend at Pittsman Career Technical Center and robotics and automation at almost $700,000 worth of equipment to equip a truly robotics lab. And that would be as funded as of, as today. The next program that, and I would encourage you to take a look at this program, it is very creative, it's making tremendous impact on these young kids, is in Chatham Middle School, career connections is focused on two key areas, it's nine core clusters of manufacturing and health sciences. What this program does is it exposes them to the careers, the technologies, the trades, and it's about $275,000 worth of equipment in Chatham Middle Schools, one middle school lab, probably best equipped middle school ever I've ever witnessed. To do, to take that to all four schools in the county was going to require additional funding to do that. So this was a beta site to do this. The teacher there, Kelsey Robinson, done a phenomenal job with this program, now the whole state of Virginia, and really people throughout the nation is looking at this program as a model for the nation to be able to engage kids at a much younger age. So to, to, to upfit all the core of the classes that's required in Pittsman County, we require three additional classrooms. In Go Virginia funding, we call this funding Phase Two. Phase Two is 2A and 2B. 2A is now, we give an additional middle school, we fund it now. In 12 months from now, we fund two more schools when we hit our deliverables from Phase 2A. But what this means for Pittsman County is another $890,000 to equip all of the middle schools. And I know you all have hard copies of this. So that funding is coming from Danville Regional Foundation as well as the Go Virginia initiative.
The other program that Greg talked about is IT cyber programming and networking. This is one of the areas that we have a shortfall. The reason for this is we put funding in for Danville Regional Foundation and for Go Virginia for program and network development in the high schools and Pittsman Career Technical Center with fund programs at all four high schools and PCTC. Go Virginia, when we submitted the overall regional Go Virginia grant, basically what they asked us to do is to reduce the asking Go Virginia grant, it was an extraordinary grant, and they basically took out all the IT funding and all the advanced level 30 programs for the institute. So the shortfall we have for Pittsman County in the IT pathway development is $288,000. The encouraging thing, though, is there were some additional requests made to the Danville Regional Foundation. The Danville Regional Foundation was a $5.6 million grant, and they have funded the middle schools and elementary schools for STEM, encoding, and computer programming at the sum of $233,000. The STEM Academy will receive about $450,000 for additional technology for the STEM Academy, where they bus all students to. PCTC, we requested to upfit and to renovate the halls and upfit the new robotics lab. So this is actually building renovations at $215,000 and to upgrade welding equipment in the welding lab, which they have approved funding. So the additional programs strictly from Danville Regional Foundation with no Go Virginia request of matches of a little over a million dollars that is going to be put in place. So basically what the summary of this is, is there's an investment of requests that went out to put $3.2 million in Pittsman County schools in technology and building outfits. Danville Regional Foundation has approved $2.2 million, Go Virginia, 700, approximately $750,000. And we do have a shortfall of $288,000. The Danville Regional Foundation grant does require matching dollars to match that, so we have a shortfall in the match to the Danville Regional Foundation because of the cut to the Go Virginia initiative. So what I'm here to do is to ask for support from the board to support the shortfall in IT. That, every organization we submitted for, Danville Public Schools has the same shortfall. They sought that funding from city council, approved that to offset the IT shortfall. Then Danville Community College had an over $200,000 shortfall, so the community college is finding ways to, to support that, as well as that the institutes and programs are working on. So what this basically means to us is that the board can support the shortfall, the Danville Regional Foundation money, which requires matches in place. And we are to the point of executing about $3.2 million of investment in Pittsman County schools if we can secure the $288,000.
Any questions?
Just have one quick one. Would the IT curriculum focus on industry certifications, or is it going to just be book writing?
Yeah, certifications too, but it follows the same pathways as machining that if we're actually doing dual enrollment, pushing it back into the career technical high schools where they start earning credits for that two-year community college degree. And in those first-year programs, the certifications they would earn in the first year of the programs at community college, they would earn the same certifications in the time that then Pittsman County Schools duly enrolled in the college programs.
Yes, sir.
Actually, I have several, Mr. Chairman. Any feedback, Mr. Simpson, on why Go Virginia decided to pull the information technology part out?
In, I guess you could find several different reasons if you look deep enough, but it's warranted. I think it really boiled down, we submitted a $6.9 million grant to them, and we were told we needed to pare it back. So it actually cut some automation robotics out of the institute, the advanced level 30 programs. So it wasn't just IT. So basically, we chose it as a reason to say, we don't want to cut the lower level programs. We'd rather cut the most advanced programs, get the pipeline field and start training in those areas, and we'll seek funding to go back and charge those upper level programs. We basically just had to cut money out of the grants.
The other part, of course, is I'd like to say, it would really be nice if we could get these requests, but we're in budget time, that's why I've started asking the question, where are we going to get this money from, and how are we going to get it going? Because I'm sure that's...
I've got some questions.
Mr. Blackstock's coming about that, too. The next thing is, who will have management and oversight of this nine and a half million dollars?
The institute's fiscal agent on the Go Virginia grant, which is basically in two phases of that. Danville Community College led the Danville Regional Foundation grant, and it's still the new president coming, it's yet to be determined who that will lie with. But I saw some correspondence to Danville, him and President Dr. Paul says, told Clark that we would, that decision would be made within the next week, or do we manage that?
The next question I have is, I always like to ask this question, because anytime we feel like we're giving guilt, so to speak, from all this funding, is what's the sustainability of it once this, it starts up and it gets going? Because I know one of the things, this equipment, this equipment has to be replaced regularly and all of the... I'm sure you do, but I want him, the public, to hear, what's your plans for making sure that the sustainability exists and the equipment's replaced on a calendar basis for, I think, about four, five years, and then we'll be speaking?
On the robotics and automation equipment, we've really done a deep dive into that, and you could probably figure 10 to 12 years of useful life in that. And the hardware will still be good, it's a matter of software and changes is what that is. Obviously, the IT world, I mean, it changes in bullet speed, and a lot of this, if you look at it, is computers and software and hardware and so forth. When it comes to the capital equipment, and we look at it at all of these programs, the sustainability of the actual programs is the enrollment of the students in the programs, especially when it comes to the dual enrollment pathways that they're in. Long term, if we look at the same thing, even in machining, looking at, we're actually working on some other training initiatives for the Department of Defense that would provide some significant revenue opportunities to backfill these programs. To be quite honest with you, I think we're all in this room, we're betting on economic development and growth. I mean, it's kind of a chicken and egg thing, right? So if we continue to grow as a region, I think the Danville Regional Foundation has been very supportive. I think they like what they see as far as the success of some of the previous programs, and as long as we continue to deliver, I think they'll continue to be supportive. So that's, we'll still reach out to our partners for that.
And one last one. Assuming, let's say the board approves this funding, the 288, how does it have to be paid? Because I know you mentioned earlier that there's some incremental payments coming. I mean, do you need to hold 288 in this, this for a year, or are we...
So we can phase it, and there's some phase, and Go Virginia, phase 2A, 2B now and 12 months from now. What will have to be determined depending on what that revenue stream is. Some of the high school programs may have to be delayed until that second or third round of funding comes. So we'll kind of, when we see what that is, determine where there's a best one, need to be made year one at the career technical center and push it back through, through the high schools. So we can definitely phase it. And I apologize to tell them it's delayed, so we've been working on this Go Virginia grant for probably a year. And we just getting to the point now that, you know, the MOU still hasn't been signed on that grant. So we just are learning what the shortfalls are and what our strategy is to get that funded. So I do apologize, but it's kind of been out of our hands.
Yes, sir. Mr. Blackstock?
I think the, for me, this board has gotten in trouble over the years because we do a budget, and then we have things like this that continue to come up. And we, we know we need it, so we spend the money, and then we find out we're in trouble. I got a, I got a real problem with that. This is a priority. But in order for me to support this, it's, in my mind, I want to need to know, and I think the board should know, how much money you need this coming physical year out of that 288, to make this move forward. And I'm going to be asking staff, where are we going to get it without going into reserves? Can we make cuts somewhere else that is not a priority? The other question I've got is, I saw where some more money's going to the schools through those grants. If we, if more money's going to the schools through grants, have they budgeted for some of those issues with projects in their current budget? Can the schools help us with this? Because we've given schools a tremendous amount of money over the last two years, extra money. And they, and I don't rumble about giving the schools money. But it comes a point when, you know, I know in my house, there's a lot of things that I want, but when the money runs out, it runs out. And you can't keep borrowing, borrowing and borrowing from your bank account. So, you know, how much, how much money are you going to need this year? And Troy, I admire everything y'all are doing over there. I mean, it's really helping us with economic development and so forth. But we got a budget to run here, and we got to decide how we're going to fund things like this as they come up. We're not even to July 1st yet. We still in June.
I guess my response would be, there's, there's matching requirements for what the Go Virginia grant, the other grant, which has... Go Virginia grant, the RF grant, which has a two-year cycle, and they have a time period of the grant to execute that and to guarantee that you have the match. So it's a matter of meeting that timeline and then being able to communicate to them dual levels of support that, that funding is coming, not that it has to be, but there's a commitment to the funding. We can go back, and I can resubmit that to Mr. Smithman or Greg, of what that true need is for phase one, phase two of that particular grant, matching grants in that. Now, I can't speak on behalf of Pittsman County, I do, because I've been so in the weeds of this program. A lot of these requests are new programs and new technology, like one of the STEMs in the high schools and so forth, the programs they don't currently have. So I don't know, that would be a question for Dr. Jones, but I do know a lot of this, it's like the Pittsman County outfit. I've been asking, is there any way we could fix those walls? We bring economic development prospects in Pittsman Green Technical, it looks like nineteen seventy-two, and they have a charcoal tile. So we, we just never could get the point that done. So I go to the Danville Regional Foundation to say, can we include this in grant to fix this? Because this is our first stop on economic development trail where the client we bring here, and the place doesn't look presentable. So there's things that's baked into this that we just had to never find funding for that we worked pretty hard just to do upfits of buildings.
Yes, sir. Mr. Warren?
I do have one more statement, and I think that's an interesting point about fixing the building up over there, because certainly Pittsman County has been the out-front leader in decision machining programs at the K-12 level. No question about that. We did it first. It's not stated enough in the public, but we were the front-runners on that initiative to develop workforce development. And just personal opinion as a citizen of Pittsman County, I don't feel like we get a just do sometimes. And in fact, we did that, and I know Mr. Simpson was a big advocate that pushed that for Pittsman County, so thank you for that. But Pittsman County is a driving force for economic development that's occurring right now within this region, because we stepped up and did those programs. And, you know, for me, I want to thank past boards and current board, and we made those decisions, and the school system stepped up and did also, along with Mr. Simpson, and pushed that as a Pittsman County citizen.
Yes, sir. I'd just like to, I've got four bullets, I was writing down as you were talking, Mr. Simpson. One was thank you. You know, you just gave us a ten or fifteen-minute presentation, but it was years behind that, you know, the numbers that it took for you and others, you know, staff to get to this point. So it's not very often you're awarded the multiple millions of dollars that the county's in line to receive, and I want to say thank you. Any new jobs created at the technical center for these curriculums?
There is a, there's a transition in that, they've just hired a new person to lead the robotics and automation programs since Mr. Pollard retired. They have IT staff in place to, to execute that program as well. It'll be a complete revamp for the whole lab, a complete curriculum change. It's a completely brand-new program.
And I heard you mention on some of the trips that the city was involved, but I haven't seen anything on this slide in regard to the city. Are they bringing any students, or they have any-
They're building the same programs in George Washington High School, so basically what they're into, they are, I think, funding about one point two million to upfit two labs in George Washington High School and to make up the two hundred and some thousand dollar shortfall in IT. So the city's going to fund that, and that building goes under. I didn't bring all that, because it's such a big regional grant, it sits so many players in it to develop this pathway. I will state that career connections in phase two A from Buckingham County all the way to Patrick Henry, there'll be fourteen little schools with career connections. Pittsman County will have every school that got tool up and running. It'll be the first county in the whole state that every school they have will have it in, but that's advantage of the grant.
Yes, sir. Mr. Warren?
And actually, correct me if I'm not, Mr. Simpson, it's actually, the vision is to have this extension from Whitfield Hall.
Yes, sir, it is. Whitfield's president, Dr. Sprinkler, is leading a group in Southwest that visited as well. They're trying to replicate the dual enrollment models, the career connection models. Ultimately, what we're trying to do is create a hub-and-spoke model where we create, create scale by working with our partners, that we can show start showing workforce numbers comparable to metropolitan areas by bringing the collaborative numbers together across a larger region to be able to win this thing called economic development. So make no mistake, I'm a county citizen, I have two children in county schools, I want them to live and work in Pittsman County. And this is my personal opinion, so on the record, off the record. Right now, our career technical programs, and I told many people this, in Pittsman County, city of Danville and the broader region, is not competitive in workforce training as the country's state regions. So we beat Matt Rowe with a head saying, why don't you bring in jobs? We need you getting buses and go ride to Ohio, South Carolina, Indiana, and look at what they're doing. And when economic prospects walk in, those school training systems are walking hours, you are intuitive to see the difference. And we're trying to make up that gap and provide opportunities for our city's kids to be just as competitive as an Ohio kid. So that's what drives me every day, is to get these kids in opt-in where they can compete.
Yes, sir. Mr. Sykes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'll indicate that Mr. Simpson and myself did meet with Ken Vanderhad. Actually, I think we talked several times through that process, you know, trying to get some numbers defined. And one of the key things we heard from Mr. Simpson is they didn't need the money upfront, it could be divided up under several budgets. And you'll see in your write-up for the business meeting for tonight that Mr. Vanderhad has roughly a third of the money available right now with, in stale economic development grant. And I'm sure he could elaborate on that. We talked about involving the IDA in funding the enforcement of this. Mr. Rowe is, is running that idea by them, and they've been very supportive of the idea of pitching into the workforce development pipeline. And then we envision the ultimate payment, or the end of the grant, being in the next budget, which would be clearly in the process the way it should be. So again, Mr. Vanderhad, technical question, but we're looking at it as, we're committed to funding it, and then we'll bring you the details about how. He may have something more to say about that.
I'd like to hear your comments, too.
Yes. We have money in our grant funds that we monitor on a monthly basis, and we've had money that has set aside for sometimes years. And what I have done over the last year is to collect those funds and put them into compartments. So I've got my rescue still grant money, I have sheriff's still grant money, and there's some economic development still grant money. And I knew that that money was there, and this is money that, you know, you may have residual left when a grant is finished and you've closed out the projects. And, I mean, some of this money is as old as fifteen years, and it's just been in the grants fund. So that's where I would say that we have the money for that first allotment of money that is needed for the Go Virginia match and the RF match. I don't see any problem with that. The only thing you all would have to do is to authorize appropriation of those funds, because they're just sitting over in the grants fund right now.
How much money are you talking for the first year?
It's ninety, ninety-eight thousand dollars that's there in still grant money. But if you broke this in the thirds, I think it's a little less than that, but we would have that amount of money that would be readily available.
So if we gave them a hundred thousand dollars, we've got a hundred eighty-eight more we're looking at over the next, the next year's budget or extension over three years.
Right, and then like-
Roughly a hundred thousand dollars a year.
Like Greg said, just, you know, the IDA wants to be a player as well.
The proposed wording that came over from Mr. Vanderhad is appropriate ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and five from the unused grant proceeds, and the remaining hundred ninety thousand five seventy-three would be divided equally and placed in the twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two budgets. And it would also consult with the IDA about a potential funding partnership for enforcement of the grant.
For the grant?
And that meet your needs?
For the grant, not-
At twenty-twenty-one, that would be what, like July, August twenty-twenty-one?
But what I heard you say was you just need a letter of support.
Instead of when it would be made available, make sure, and we'll go back and make sure that falls at any time of strength.
Right, because you know, twenty-twenty-one, you could get money in July twenty, and then July twenty-one would be July twenty-one.
Sir, Mr. Paul?
Mr. Smithman, I'd like Mr. Blackstock's idea, too. I checked with Dr. Jones, because they have money, sometimes like, I mean, we had a book run, had money. As it falls in, they make it actually go.
Yeah, burdened on also.
I don't think anybody, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I don't, I don't think anybody would say this is not a priority. I mean, the advancement is strong. The program we have over there now, I mean, we're reaping big rewards from this. And this is the next step, and I understand that. Mr. Simpson, I'm not trying to give you a hard time. I just want the board to understand that, how important we need to set some priorities. And this is, in my mind, a big priority, but we need to find the money to do it without continuing to raid our surplus from them, because, you know, we did agree that they need to be built up.
Yeah, and I am glad to hear that we got the first cycle, so we don't have to change this much. So you need, you need for us to do that, and so I guess you got it worked out, so we're going to make a motion tonight that we're going to authorize you all to work with Mr. Simpson and get the numbers right, as it had been intended, and authorize staff to continue to work with IDA, and for Mr. Smithman to meet with Dr. Jones to see how it's going to work out.
Just a thought. We're coming out with roughly a third. IDAs are only coming with roughly a third. Why wouldn't we send a letter to the board, the school board, and ask them in twenty-twenty-one to be prepared to come up with a third? That gives them two full fiscal years to work.
Three.
Three full years. But that would be a motion for the business meeting?
Yeah.
Get the motion to go on, Mr. Hunt?
Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Troy Simpson.
Thank you.
I do appreciate the presentation. Would, would add, though, that I do agree with the, we don't have to go out of state. I don't need to get on the bus as far as going checking other paradigms in other states, because I've always been of the opinion that we need really start at kindergarten and the social law, the analization. I had to get two or three times to go to Danville Community College. We need to start them out in kindergarten, so that way we have an idea of what they would have strengths in, because I'm already informed by college-educated friends in my district who said that education as far as degrees are concerned are not necessarily where it's at today, because we're losing plumbers, electricians, and all the things that we really need. They're skill-based, and so I agree with that. But I also believe that economic development, some of the responsibility rests on the industries coming here to offer training classes and courses to help employees as well, so that way they each complements each other. So I do appreciate, I appreciate your coming, I appreciate the information you had tonight.
Thank you.
I do appreciate, Mr. Warren, your pitch on putting Pittsman County out front as far as the career development, as far as the specialties that we have in our county schools. And can I get a witness on that, Mr. Matt Vale with Star Tribune? Thank you very kindly. Our next presentation, I would like to go to item B, and that is the jail and courthouse presentation that Mr. Richard in Hicks.
Okay, a couple of years ago, you hired Mowgli Architects to determine how you'll meet your future needs for courthouse and jail. And we are at the very end of that process, and we don't have a presentation to this evening that could possibly be their final grant. And I'm going to go ahead and step to B. So Mr. Tony Vale with Mowgli Architects is here. Thank you for your comment.
I've got hard copies that I'm looking to see tonight. There's some full-size copies and then two-five, six-eight copies. Based on your outside ability.
Just very, since you're nice on-
Very low. Very low. We can talk about some of those differences. But I'm really here to answer questions and give you an update on where we stand with the overall report. Looking at both court and jail needs, it's a total, just a complex analysis. So our agenda is to look at the space needs summary, to look at the existing site-to-site features, to look at the courthouse, what its space needs are. To look at the jail, its space needs. Talk about a reduced size jail is a possible solution, solving the jail issue. We'll talk a little bit about space, and then finally wrap up with some next steps. So the first step in the process was looking at what we call space needs. That's the amount of space you're going to require as time goes forward. And we sat down with each and every function of the court, including functions that are in the courthouse that are not court-related, that would be the commissioner and treasurer. And you see there, we've got a current need, a five-year need, a ten-year need, and a twenty-year need. And that twenty-year need for the court function was about eighty-seven thousand four hundreds per feet. So our goal is to solve that space need, create a solution that will meet that space need so that you don't have any space efficiency. And when about, about it, by looking at your existing court camps, position you that the red surround there is a parcel that you currently own. In the bottom left-hand corner is the historic courthouse, and behind it to the east are the two expansions that have reappeared, last being the nineteen ninety-four. Immediately north of that is the Moses Building, that's where the sheriff's office is. And then on the far east side of the site, the north half is where the school administration, and then on the south half, half is where some of the split functions are. The exact center of this parcel is the communications tower, the maintenance building. And just north of that is the planning building, the nine-one-one. So is everyone familiar with this site, have any questions about it? What this image shows is the amount of topography across your site is extremely peeling terrain. You've got approximately fifty-two feet of fall from Main Street to the northwest, all the way down to Chatham Hall on the southeast corner. Fifty-two feet of fall, okay? That's something that can work to our advantage. It could also be something working to our disadvantage if we're trying to find a level site. So we tip that into consideration as we develop solutions. First image you see here, as far as a solution is concerned, is a new court facility. This would be a new standalone court facility to vacate the existing building, and it could be used for other court func, other county functions, whether that be commissioner, treasurer, school administration, or other functions identified by the county. We've positioned the court complex basically on the north half of the parcel, basically where the existing planning building is, nine-one-one zone. So those facilities, the maintenance facility, communications tower would be, need to be relocated, the school administration building would need to be removed, and also that other school function there on the southeast corner of the parcel. A parking you see would fit all of the parking for the functions which are currently shown, i.e. the new court facility, i.e. existing vacated court facility, and the Moses Building. What it does not accommodate is a new jail facility, okay? So as we begin thinking about those options, we replace also a new jail facility, we'll look at some of those that on this parcel. Those parking needs cannot be met. And you see the amount of topography and the impacts we make to the existing structures which are already on the site. So step one would be to relocate those functions which are displaced, either temporarily or permanently, build a new court facility, and then renovate the facilities that are vacated by the court's vacation. So that's focused on the eighty-seven thousand four hundred twenty-year need of the court's functions. What would that look like in terms of a building now? In terms of the first court, we'd have the circuit court clerk, the general district court, and the general district clerk. Why would those functions be on the first court? Because they have the most public interaction. And we're trying to make this building be very user-friendly. So the functions with the most public interaction would be the circuit court clerk and the general district court. They have the contract, town hall- They have the contract town halls, big, large, hundred-person dockets. For those in the first floor, so the citizens don't have to circulate vertically in the building. This would also be the main security checkpoint, it would be one screening location on courthouse. That's an efficiency number for the courthouse from the half. We've got multiple entry points, and that's very difficult for the sheriff's office. Command is maintained, safe and secure facility. The second floor would be the J D R court, so you have two courtroom rooms for them, rather central podium, podium is the door that's there in the middle. County attorney would be on the east side of the building, J D R clerk would be on the west side of the building, J D R court services unit would be on the southwest and then the south building. Public circulation would be on the south half of the plan, staff circulation would be on the north side of the plan. And that sort of courtroom design, what I want is maintaining three different circulation paths. You have staff, circulation, you have public circulation, where's the third circulation now?
Inmate.
Inmate, the detainee. So those three circulation paths need to remain separate and distinct at all times, except in one location, and that's the courtroom. So that's the deficiency that we're seeing in our current court facility here in Pennsylvania County, among which we will endeavor to correct in our new court facility, and that's what this does too. And you may ask, well, the sizes of these spaces, what do they determine about? Those are all set by the Virginia courthouse facility guidelines, okay? These are not arbitrary sizes. They're set based on standards, based on, you know, the whole Commonwealth, and what the common practices are. And we adhere to those standards moving forward on the plane of this facility. The third level would be the circuit court. So you see two, two circuit courtrooms, circuit court clerks, extra, additional space would be on this level, and then all the courts and court functions would be on this level. And once again, those are all connected, those courtroom rooms are connected to that podium court room. So we're not having to circulate detainees throughout the building, they're circulating vertically in the building, and then feeding those courtroom rooms on the east and the west. Remember I talked about how that rating, that topography on our site is going to work to our advantage? By having a security level, the lower level of the building, we can daylight that to the east, and on the west side of the building, that would be dug into the earth. So that's going to work to our advantage in that we can have a Sally Court, a drive-through Sally Court, and we can offload those detainees, circulate them on the lower level, and then bring them up vertically through the middle of the building, and then offload into those courtroom rooms on the first, second, and third floors. And that would work very well for us. So this lower level is strictly support space, mechanical, electrical, and also the sheriff's office and the detainee's central podium. Does anyone have any questions about courts when we move on to the jail?
Or your W, is that the water club restroom? I didn't see a restroom.
Those Ws immediately changes courtrooms, those are witness attorney countertrials. So that's another deficiencies that we have here in Pennsylvania County, is having facilities that the Commonwealth attorney can meet with, complain of, and that the county attorney can meet with his clients, and it proves someone a safe and secure environment. They're not having to go outside the building, they're not having to do so in restroom. These are dedicated rooms, and we can also put witnesses in. So if there's a witness of the Commonwealth needs to be held safe and secure while the proceedings go on, deputies can put them in these witness attorney countertrials, keep an eye on them, and they'll be there when they need to be called. So this area in the middle, I can't highlight it. Yep, there we go. So this building support area here in the middle, that would be where all your, your circulation and your support areas are, your men's and women's restrooms, your janitor closets, things of that nature, IT closets would be in there, data closets, and support electricals. Any other questions? All right, let's move then on to the jail. As regards to the jail, we did a population forecast, we passed that study on to you. It's not necessarily an issue of growth here in Pennsylvania County. Not anticipating a huge influx of inmates. It's one with more quality. So it's not a quantity we're battling with, it's quality. We've got an existing jail that systems have begun to fit. It's mechanical systems, it's electrical systems, and it's plumbing systems. We're rated for 32 beds, 32 beds, Commonwealth, Virginia, and we're generally holding about 100 as our ADP, our average daily population. Another 50 inmates would be shipped off to Blue Ridge Regional every day. So we're looking at about 150 inmates on a typical day, average daily population, and we're anticipating about an average daily population in the future, in the 15-year future, of between 160 and 172. So it's not tremendous growth that we're having to accommodate here, it's, you know, making sure we head off cataclysmic event where systems fail, we'd have to abandon the jail. So in looking at how the 172 beds would break down, we propose two male day rooms, 20 cells to each 40 beds, one female, nine cells, two medium male rooms, male day rooms, one medium female day room, and then two minimum male dorms. Those would be 20 each to result in 40 beds, and then one female dorm for 10 beds. There'd be community custody area, and then we'd each have six beds, one for females, one for males, and then we'd have some special purpose house and also some medical house. So these different classification types, that's, again, something we don't have here in Pennsylvania County. Every cell, all 32, are all cells, okay? There's no dormitory housing, there's no community custody housing, there's no work release housing. So the community custody, that's work release, that's workforce, that's the rehabilitation, okay? When people get across ready, the preparation, putting them back on the street, and getting them to be contributing citizens of Pennsylvania County. So all told, 190 beds, 172 of those are general population, and then 18 of those are special purpose, either segregation or medical. So in terms of jail facilities, jails like to be on one story, okay? They don't like to be vertical structures. Vertical structures work to our advantage in terms of courtroom rooms, because we have those three circulation paths. In jails, we really only have two. We've got the public, which enters the front of the building, really is confined just to that, that front area, you know, the lobby and the visitation area. Then we've got the detainees and the staff, and they basically are in the same areas throughout the facility. When we walk with an inmate, or for a jail officer, for sheriff's deputy, we want to maintain total control at all times. That becomes difficult when we start to have vertical circulation, and we've got folks in elevators, and we've got to go up and downstairs. That creates opportunities for accidents to happen. So ideally, jail facilities are one-story. Obviously, when you have a 172-bed facility, that creates a rather large footprint. So as you look here, this is your current campus and what a 172-bed facility would work on, would look like on it. It would basically take up the majority of the campus. If we looked at it on an off-site facility, somewhere else in the county, it would accommodate basically about a 15 to 20-acre parcel. You have not looked at or identified any parcels as targets for what that would be somewhere in the county at this point, this is merely planning purposes, okay? But when you put in the stormwater, when you put in the parking for the staff and public, when you put in the circulation, when you put in the recreation yards, it's about a 15 to 20-acre parcel that's required. We've got plans for all these facilities, as far as planning documents to justify, you know, the square footage that's required, we can look at those. This is the south end of the plans, we'll start at the south end of the plan, and then rotate clockwinds around the footprint. So the south end of the plan is the main public entry there on the south. We have the staff and inmate intake in the orange. Immediately behind that is the community custody area, you see the segregated community custody entrance. Community custody inmates do not interact at all with general population inmates. The reason is, we want to limit the amount of contraband that would come into the facility. So those folks are going back and forth to jobs every day, and maybe going to workforce, they may be going to work release, but they don't mix with general population, they need their own separate entry and exit for the facility. On the left-hand side of the plan, that would be where we've got our laundry, that would be where we have our kitchen, that would be where we have our warehouse. And then you see that quarter which kind of cuts across the whole man of the jail. Everything south of that quarter is our support spaces, everything north of that is our housing. So as we start looking at the housing, you see here, you've got five dormitories, one far left is for females, and we've got two males, and then an additional two males. What you see in the blue is the, is the recreation yards, and those are all defined by the jail standards. The size of the cells, the size of the dormitories are all according to the jail standards most recently adopted in March of 2018, okay? And this needs assessment that we've created is the first step in terms of getting a new facility, either renovated and expanded, or a new facility constructed for the locality. You've got to go through the board of corrections with the needs assessment, and then also a planning study. These are the cell dormitories we have here. See six of them across there, and then a multi-purpose room, a large multi-purpose room, and a rec yard on the far right. And what if we looked at a three-story facility on your existing campus? How could that be accommodated? You can see the approximate footprint there, and what it would look like if we had it with the existing court facility, with, that we discussed previously in the previous presentation? It could be accommodated on the site, it could be connected to that existing, or, excuse me, to that proposed courthouse, much as your existing jail is connected to your existing courthouse. That's a little bit of an anomaly, but it is, does exist in certain areas of the Commonwealth, Fairfax County has it, Southampton County has it, and it creates tremendous benefit for the sheriff's office in terms of safety and security of both staff and inmates, because you don't have transportation costs, you don't have transportation difficulties in order to move detainees back and forth. What this does not accommodate is parking, okay? So we, we'd have to go off-site to meet the, the general requirements of the, of the parking of these facilities. The first floor would be all the jail support functions, okay? That would be laundry, that would be warehouse, that would be intake, that would be community custody. Second floor would be primarily your cell areas, and two dorms there on the left. And the third floor would be more cell areas, and a dormitory there on the far north of the plan. When we were talking with the committees, we looked at several options. One of those options was, instead of building all 160 to 172 beds here in Pennsylvania County, as what as if we built a smaller jail, say a 60-bed facility, and maintain our relationship with the regional jail. And that maintenance of, of relationship could be maintaining existing contracts, or joining as a full member. And the pros and cons of each can be discussed, and I don't know if tonight's the, the correct opportunity for that, or maybe a later opportunity, but we'll just touch on them briefly. Obviously, with your current arrangement, you've got a very good per diem, very good rate per day for your inmate population. But there's no long-term guarantee with that. If they see a huge influx in their bed capacity, or, excuse me, in their bed population, they could, when your, when your contract came up for renewal, say, "I'm sorry, we don't have any more room for you, you're going to have to go find another place somewhere else." And that could put Pennsylvania County in quite a pinch. Obviously, Blue Ridge Regional Jail is very close by. We would have to run the inmates out to Western Regional or R S W Regional, that's a mighty far haul, and that would be a tremendous strain on the sheriff's deputies making those travel arrangements, especially the three child inmates that would have to be coming and going to court each day. So those, those are sort of the downsides of keeping the current arrangement. Obviously, the advantages are the cost. Your per diem is significantly lower than the per diems paid by the full members. But if you were a full member, you've got that guaranteed number of beds, and as the jail moves forward, you would maintain that relationship and those benefits. So we looked at, you know, look, we looked at the possibility of, what if we did a 60-bed facility? And we indicated there are two day rooms, each containing several double beds, several double bunk beds. What we ultimately landed on were two day rooms for male and two day rooms for female, but instead of doing double bunking, we did single. The reason we did that is single would give you the capability down the road to go back and double bunk, okay? You cannot build maximum security, and you only can build limited number of medium-security beds, double bunk, from the onset. So to give the county more flexibility, more adaptability over the long haul, we thought it would be better to do single bunking on the onset. Also, if we double bunked now, you'd have the same number of beds you have today, or, excuse me, the same number of cells you had today. And we would see really no benefit besides you'd have a new facility with new systems. So the footprint for this looks basically like a three-story, okay? It's just a one-story jail, might stay for more secure than a three-story facility. If we moved outside of the town of Chatham on a, on a parcel, you know, instead of being 15 to 20 acres, we're looking at only about five for the 60-bed facility. And in terms of the layout, it would look something like this. We'd still have the different classification areas, we'd still have some full cell areas, medium, maximum, and minimum, but we'd also have the, the dormitories. We could do community custody, work release, workforce, you still have intake, obviously that's at the bottom, and your full support, you know, laundry, kitchen, warehouse, things of that nature. In terms of the schedule, obviously, this is the first presentation we've made to a full board. We've had several interactions with your board members that are on the courthouse committee throughout the process, and we presented most recently on May 3rd to the court committee on the court side chaired by Judge Murro. Moving forward, we will wrap up with your input and create a draft of the full report that will include both space needs, the options that we've looked at. We'll then come back and present to you at a full board meeting, if so desired, in July, and then wrap up the study, present a final report to you. Are there any other questions we can ask for you this evening? Yes, sir, Mr. Blackstock.
Mr. Vale, the 60-bed facility.
Yes, sir.
Is that 60? I thought I heard you say that you, that 60 beds is rated by the D O C, that's not double bunk.
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
And how many beds are in cell areas? How many cells is that? Go back and look at that.
It's roughly about two-thirds cell, and about one-third courtroom.
Two day rooms with seven double beds, it was, and one single. Seven double beds.
Are you looking at the narrative there?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we backed off of, go back to that slide. So instead of day rooms, each containing seven double beds, you're going to day rooms with 15, single.
Okay, so this slide on here is...
It's been updated since then.
Okay.
So to Mr. Warren's question, he asked, what's been updated? That's been updated.
Okay.
To conform with the current jail standards.
And that jail would cost 15 million?
Good question. So we looked at both the cost of the full jail, building all 160 beds, and then also the jail with just the 60 beds. So in May, we looked at about, cost of about 15 million dollars. Will we make sure it adheres to all of the current jail standards? It's about 17, a little more than 17. But the jail facility we looked at this evening would be fully approved by the, the D O C.
And so if we could go back and put the bolts in the wall, and the day that they approve it, you can double bunk it. And a cell, if you have a cell and you put one bed in there, what you do when you build it, you put the bolts in the wall, and you buy the bunk for about, I don't know, it used to be about 250 bucks a piece, and you bolt it to the wall, and you double bunk, and it stays okay with that?
That's fair.
And, and so even though you're talking about 60 beds, you could push it, the count really would be how many of the cells you got, you can double bunk. You can also put more beds in those dormitories than it state rates. I sat on that committee before I retired and wrote their standards right there. And it's a lot of extra space in those cells. The inmates that are currently, the jail now that's so overcrowded, the, the inmates in this facility will still have more room than they would. than they would even double bunk than they've got now. The, so we could push that up, even with a $15 million jail, we could push that count up immediately up to probably, I don't know, how many you got in there, 90?
Easily 90, yes, sir.
The only concern that I would have, what I saw in here, was you had six beds for females and males for community corrections. And unless things have changed over here, we've got a lot of dead meat dads and they like to put on work release. So, and that's dormitory-style housing. And you need a separate entrance for those people.
True.
So, you know, if we move in that direction, I think we need to put more space in for community corrections. That's work release. That's where people come to jail, especially people, J and D Court over here, unless it's changed, just a lot of people are on work release. They bring them in, they get behind $3,000 or $4,000, they put them on work release and let them catch up on their job. And it benefits everybody, the person who keeps their job, so forth. And the sheriff keeps control of the local jail.
So in terms of that possibility, we then went a little bit further and started to look at, what is the cost to maintain our existing relationship with the regional or joining the regional? Both operating costs and the initial cost and the total cost. So you see here a summary of some of the different scenarios. Current conditions, we've got 110 daily population. Operating cost is about 4.2 million dollars. And then we send another 50 over to Blue Ridge, that's about almost half a million dollars for a total cost of about 4.7.
Is that operational cost, too?
It is, it is.
But that whole, that entire 4.7 wouldn't be eaten by the locality because some of those salaries are included in convoy funding.
That's correct.
The funding for the offices in the new jail, based on the ratio, would be covered by the convoy with the exception of FICA, just like they are now. So, and that's a large portion of the cost. Am I right, Sheriff?
Yes, sir. With DOC, John Simmons is going to base any reimbursements or the cost of the jail as it's rated. If it's rated for 60, that's what they're going to pay for it.
Right.
And right now, we're rated for 32, Sheriff, right?
And we're funded for 30, on that form, 35.
And we've gotten 20 emergency?
Somewhere about, yes.
We've got 20 emergency staff. Now, when we go rated 60, we'd get a lot more staff than convoy. I won't get as many emergency, but it would basically be the same number of staff. So there'd be no lost staff, the count. Does that make sense? And that's important.
But if you double bunk, which increases your population, which was it, one to three?
Yes. So the next scenario we looked at is if we had a new Pennsylvania County jail on the site outside of Chatham, using that same per diem. So the $105 is the approximate cost per inmate to maintain an inmate here in Pennsylvania County.
Current.
Jail facility.
Current.
Correct, that's correct. And that also takes into consideration the healthcare costs for all the inmates that are sent to Blue Ridge Regional. You know, the daily rate we're paying at Blue Ridge Regional is about $26 a day. So the total cost there is about 6.2. A new smaller jail in Pennsylvania County, 60 inmates, about $2.3 million. Sending 100 to Blue Ridge would be roughly $1 million for a total cost of 3.2. And then a new smaller jail with workforce, 60 daily population, about 2.9. But now, we're going to, instead of maintaining our current relationship, we're going to become a full member of Blue Ridge. So that's going to increase our per diem. We go from $26 a day to 41.28 a day, roughly $1.5 million. So our annual cost is about 3.8. So if you then take those numbers, you may want to get a large copy for this, and project them over 30 years, obviously, that first column, that one-time cost is the construction, okay? And the construction becomes a much smaller percentage cost when you start looking at 30 years. When we talked about it previously, it's akin to an iceberg. You know, what you see on bid day, that cost for that new jail, that renovation in addition, is the top of the iceberg that you can see. What's under the water is all the operating costs. That may be staffing, that may be HVAC, that may be electrical, all the maintenance costs of running the facility. And on a jail, it's a lot of money because it's a 24/7 facility. Once the sheriff cuts the lights on on that new jail, they stay on until you close it. There are no off-days at the jail, okay?
For staff, either?
For staff, either, that's correct. So we looked at, you know, number one there is building up a new jail on a county site somewhere in Chatham. Number two is outside of Chatham but within the county. Roughly the same cost. Item three is a new smaller jail. And this is maintaining our current relationship with the Blue Ridge Regional. So we've got a lesser operating cost. And then option four is becoming a full member of the jail. Remember, the risk between three and four is any day when Mr. Smithman or the jail chair go to call up, "We're ready to renew our contract with you, Blue Ridge Regional. Sorry, there's no room. We won't be able to renew your contract this year. You're going to have to go somewhere else." So that concludes the presentation. Chairman, I hope I didn't grow over too much on my time. But we're here to answer any questions or provide you any additional information as we wrap things up. Obviously, there's some pretty heavy issues to discuss and make decisions on. We've worked extensively with Judge Moreau in terms of what the priorities are here in the county. Obviously, the first and foremost priority is the citizens. Making sure that the citizens are thought of and given opportunity to maintain serving sentence here in the county and give them rehabilitation opportunities, whether it be work release, whether it be workforce, whether it be drug court, or whether it's drug programs that are offered in the facilities. Right now, the sheriff has put one program room in the existing jail. These facilities we've looked at this evening would have multiple multi-purpose rooms, rehabilitation programs, whether it be educational or otherwise. Mr. Hicks, any questions I can answer for you?
Pretty thorough. I'm there, it's up to you. This may be the final recommendation. It's the size of the courthouse and the smaller jail somewhere offsite.
Yes, sir, Mr. Paul.
I saw the price tag of the 120, then of the 60. I didn't see any mention of a courthouse price.
We provided that, we didn't provide it in this presentation, but I can give that to you.
And then another thing would be, and this is putting a little bit of the cart before the horse, but temporary location for both. You know, that's going to be critical in the pricing of that process.
Would be lengthy of temporary, whether it's jail or courthouse during the construction.
And they have other costs of building additional facilities and renovating the old courthouse to move the treasurer's office. Maybe some of the other offices in the courthouse, the school system will probably get into the old courthouse. You've got those remodeling costs also, and you may have to take the 911 center might have to reschedule. They're building, grounds have got to go somewhere, or the plant has to go somewhere. Some of them might really have to be built.
If you use the current jail, if you go off-site, the current jail will stay at place.
Until it's ripped.
Yeah.
During the construction of the courthouse, you would have to find spaces for them to live. I think the judge is, in my stance, is right. I should say his move forward on the jail or get an X or R.
So here's some, supervisor Palmer, here's some cost data for the court facility. I apologize if you can't see it from where you are, but I can read it off to you. So what this, you know, the penultimate goal of this entire process is to develop a CIP funding mechanism. You can begin to look at these priorities or projects and put them into calendar periods. And then begin to allocate your CIP funding based on where it falls in the timeline. So a new court facility, new court facility, we looked at about $44 million. That's in today's dollars. New jail facility, we talked about that, that being about $40 million. That's for a full 160 beds. Obviously, we looked at a 60-bed facility being about $17 million. New 911 center, about $2 million. School board facilities, relocation or renovation, about six and a half. Commissioner revenue and treasurer, office relocation, about 1.6. And they can stay where they are. We would just renovate to give them more growth space. So, and that's the real benefit of the configuration on your existing campus is you vacate that existing courthouse that has difficulties with regard to its circulation. And when they built that original courthouse on the corner, there was no tragedies like we saw at Virginia Beach a couple of weeks ago. That was unheard of, okay? Safety and security has become paramount in our current society. And we need to deal with it and on. So we need to move that communications tower. Obviously, that has to be done upfront if we implement the courthouse. The planning department will be moved into a new maintenance facility. So it's about 100 million, about $96 million in terms of total construction. But then we also looked at, you know, where would that fall in terms of timeline? And we're starting to put escalation on it. So, you know, if we put it, the relocated requirements here in the 2022 column, a total of about $11 million. And then a new court facility in 2024. And obviously, as we've gone through the course of discussion, we've kind of determined that the jail is a higher priority because of the systems that are, and the ticking issue that becomes. And perhaps that should be moved up because if we lose those systems, then we've got a real problem. We're no longer in a proactive territory, we're in a very reactive territory. We talked about that, Chairman Davis said at our last meeting, right? So these two make foot block, okay? And accordingly, because the numbers are about equal, then the cost for foot block as well. And we've got cost breakdowns for all these, I can forward to you and you can distribute them to all the board members. It basically looks at all the costs, from square foot costs to furniture, geotechnical investigations, special inspections, things of that nature. And we can expand those to whatever degree the county would desire. We don't currently have, like, financing put into these numbers. But if the county would desire that we put those in numbers, put those in to help in terms of your CIP development, we'll be happy to preoffer that. And I know, I think the county's already talked with that important a little bit. I'd like to go on to.
Yeah, yeah.
PFM, too. About some of the opportunities and strategies, meaning that for CIP need.
But all those construction members would be in that draft before?
Yes.
That will be good in some.
Yes. Great question, thank you. You're mine. Got any more questions, Mr. Bell? Thank you, Mr. Bell. Thank you. Good job. Thank you. Item number six.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, this is a very quick topic, building height issue. Mr. Rowe, or he can I be known as Director, approached me and then together we approached the planning commission about the fact that he's been getting a lot of prospects that we're looking, particularly at the Mega Park, that we're looking for a higher building height. Our current ordinance, even for him too, which is our most idiosyncratic industrial zoning district, limits the maximum height of buildings to 80 feet. He indicated that with requests that he received, he'd like to raise that to 150 feet. And that's based on actual requests of companies that very large producers want to come to the Mega Park and they say, you know, it's another step, it's another risk for them, they have to go through a variance process and all of that. So we are proposing to increase the building height, but only in the industry's zoning district and only on large tracts of land. Because the type of industry that comes in these 150 feet, they also need a lot of land. So what was recommended to the planning commission was to modify that section of zoning ordinance, leave the standard building height at 80 feet, but then just add language saying for parcels measuring 150 acres or greater in size, the maximum height of buildings shall be 150 feet. Now, the planning commission expressed some concern about fire issues. So we added the language that says, "Buildings greater than 80 feet in height must incorporate on-site fire control provisions," which again is the norm. They know that you're not going to run a ladder up to the top of that 150-foot building. So this was recommended by Matt. It was presented to the planning commission. They were supportive. The planning commission held a public hearing. There was no opposition. The planning commission unanimously approved it. The next step for any zoning ordinance change is to come back to the planning, board of supervisors. Board of supervisors, we weren't able to meet the advertisement requirements between the planning commission meeting and this meeting. So this is just a heads up that it'll be announced for public hearing at the July meeting.
All right. Any discussion on that? All right, Mr. Sigh, moving on, item B, solar.
All right, I can make this as quick or long as necessary. But just to, the reason this topic came up, you all received a letter from a local organization expressing some, you know, concerns about solar in the county. They have since clarified their position that they're not opposed to solar, they're neutral on solar. But they raised, you know, points that we need to be considered as we go along.
Has the other boards been previewed to that letter that I received?
Yes.
Has this board? It wasn't in our package?
It was in the primary.
Okay, so make sure everybody got it.
And all the planning commission members and the VZA members, so that copies of both, the first one and the following. We are learning as we go and educating ourselves on this solar situation. And it just so happens about the time that letter came in that I was scheduled to go to a seminar that was called Shining Light on Utility Scale Solar. This was up in Harrisonburg. And it was quite a few localities. There was 50 or so that were largely in the city of Normal Valley, but also as far away as the city of Franklin, Chesterfield, just outside of Richmond, and towards us in Pennsylvania County. And it was very interesting that they had both consultants, they had corporate environmental quality permitting people, they had UVA Environmental Institute representation, a company there that has had a 3,500-acre solar project in Pennsylvania County. They were there speaking on their experiences. But what I learned is that, you know, every locality is trying to address what is a new issue. I found that Pennsylvania County is well ahead of the crowd. When we first got our first solar project, we came up with a solar ordinance that was based on looking at what other localities had done. It's also partly based on the DEU model ordinance that was issued for Virginia. And actually turned up just a notch or two as far as strength. So again, I don't want to take a lot of time, but just to give you a feel for it, we do allow it through special use process, which means it has to go to the planning commission and it has to go to board zoning appeals, which as you know, the VZA is a pretty independent body. We require a very extensive site plan. It's filled out in our ordinance, all of the information we need on existing uses, existing properties, substations, electrical lines, fencing, buffering, of course, vegetative buffering is a key part of the requirements. So we've got very stringent requirements in terms of the site plan. We also have pretty stringent requirements in terms of decommissioning bond. This is something that gets a lot of attention. What we did was we required an itemized estimate from an engineer certified in the state of Virginia, breaking down this much for removal of the collective, this much for regrading. breaking down this much removal of the collective, this much of the regrading, and all of that totaled up. And then we require either a letter credit, a surety bond, any of our typical bonding requirements like we do for subdivisions. Those are available. And we require that that estimate be updated every five years, since it's a long-term project. So every five years, the cost has to be updated to make sure that it takes into account inflation and stuff. One of the things that we did in Pittsavany County, I think, was the first I saw, was some of the localities, some of the ordinances were saying, well, it's going to cost a million dollars to remove these collectors at the end of their life, but it's five hundred thousand dollars worth of copper and glass and metal or whatever can be recycled. And they wanted to use that to offset their bond amount. We had some recycling experience, and we're not in the recycling business, so we're saying, we're not counting the recycle value in the bond amount. If it costs a million dollars to remove, we need a million dollars bond. So again, I think our ordinance is pretty stringent in that requirement. I learned that, you know, other localities are struggling with this, and I did pick up a few points of things we may consider in the future in terms of a minimum separation distance between some of these solar farms so that they're not jammed in together, that's something we'll explore. The planning commission's been supportive of the process, they went in a little skeptical at first, and they've seen all of the safeguards and the fact that you have to go through all of these steps. So the planning commission's approved, I think, a total of five at this point. And D Z A has been supported too, everyone has passed, both D Z A and the planning commission have been unanimous. It just so happens that a good number of these have been farm families that own a lot of land, and they've come and said, this is our best way to stay on the farm, is that we can continue to farm the paradise and we get guaranteed income from the paradise. We had another farm family that said, I just hate the idea of getting cut up into subdivisions, but I'd rather have it put into this use for thirty-four years. Another requirement that I knew not too much about until I went to this opposing is, after they get past the locality, there is still a DEQ permitting process. And they have a permit by right process that says, if you address all of these things, then you get your permit. And they're looking at cultural resources, natural resources, everything you can imagine DEQ would look at, endangered species, all of that. They look at whether there are impacts, and if there are determined to be impacts, they want mitigation strategies. So there is another, you know, level above what we're doing. So my message to you all is we have a pretty strong ordinance and we're keeping a close eye on things, and we'll continue, to the planning commission I'm sure, to continue to keep a close eye on this particular level of project. You know, some of the obvious benefits is most of these projects are in land that's in the land use program. So revenue-wise, it does come out of the land use program, and it is taxed at full real estate value, and there's a reduced, but still some personal property tax rate. Now, a recent project we had, which was not one of the largest ones, and it was estimated to bring in fifty thousand dollars a year. So fifty thousand dollars increase in tax, it would be quite a debt sort of low curve for some counties, you know, not bad. So that's what I had, I'll be glad to answer any questions, or would you bring this back at a future meeting, you know, based on the times of that?
Thank you, Mr. Seitz, Mr. Vaughn?
Uh, Mr. Seitz, the only thing that I would say is, that gives me a little bit of concern, is how long do these things last? And for that reason, I would like to see this put in there as part of our requirement, that anybody that's not doing the letter credit, that's doing a little surety bond, that they have to be rated at the top level by at least three known rating firms, like A M S and that would give us assurance, better assurance as much as you can of their financial stability. I don't want to be thirty years down the road and find out that they're with a company that doesn't qualify. And because those things are purchased each year, I mean, you all, and they should have to report those financials to us and what those ratings are, because they're rating every year as they do their reviews, just put the county in a little better protected position.
I agree, Mr. Vaughn, and we found out from other localities at this meeting that they were having problems with some of the companies being able to get bonds. And I think what was happening is they were going to local banks and local operations, and they just couldn't quite tackle this thirty-to-four-year lifespan. So it's going to take a large firm to be able to do that, to do a same.
And that way, we know they don't have the ratings to say long.
I've had two in my district in 2019, so in the last six months, I've gone through the process, and there's currently, I believe, a third one maybe in the works. So my district has been one of the more busier ones in terms of solar here recently. I think as a county, I would say this is something new, something, it's new technology, new way of, of, of maybe people utilizing their land for long, long term. So I would like to know, and Mr. Seitz, I don't have the experience nor the expertise, but is there, or could there be a strategic plan in place that looks at our power lines? Because I'm understanding that that's what's going to limit this, is what the actual line capacities are. So I like looking at, can we like have a map of where they currently are? And then where, or maybe, you know, if two go online in my district, based on their sizes, does that maybe, you know? And I know that developers are already looking at that, because that's how they're going to be able to self-pitch four hundred acres or something, is to tell them they have the capacity. But I would like for us to be in, on that same wavelength, is that kind of making sense?
Well, it is to some degree. Like you say, the projects are going to be somewhat self-limiting. They can say, I got a thousand acres right here that lays flat, but if there's not a transition on the substation close by, then it's going to go over. So it's limited that way. And then when they go through the DEQ process, they have to have PG, PGM interconnection approval that's pretty darn elaborate too, where they look at, you know, is the system even capable of handling this power? And if so, where and how? That's probably above the locality's level of regulation, but one of the things I did here at this meeting was, some localities had a little trouble doing something similar to what you said because the power companies were skittish about giving out information.
Okay, another question would be, what are other localities doing in terms of, you know, capacity land-wise? Are they putting, or is anyone putting a figure on ten percent of available land, solar, or, you know? Because I, my fear is, we currently don't have any restraints on approving. And we're doing these things at hundreds of acres at a time. Fast forward five years from now, and we approve fifteen other projects, you know, I just have a fear of where, you know? This is, agriculture is one of the biggest, you know, industries, it is the biggest industry in our county. And protecting some of that, even though this is an individual's choice, but still, I look at it as economic development plan along the way.
That's, that's right, and that is one of the concerns that comes up from town to town. North Carolina used an example that, they said a lot of people say that they are built out in terms of solar because they are way, way, way beyond us in capacity. But there's a representative from them at this meeting, and it said, but still, they're less than two-tenths of one percent of the agricultural land that's undersold, so they're still not.
That's what I was wondering, it may be nice to.
And I checked with Shirley just preliminarily, and I think we've got three hundred and some thousand acres, three hundred and thirty thousand, so it is in land use right now. But that can, you know, that is the kind of thing I think we'll continue to look at as more projects come in, what is the amount of potential ag land in the county? I don't think it's.
And it's a fine line, because then you're telling someone what they can and can't do on their property. So I understand that too, but I do appreciate your input, thanks.
Any further questions, just here tomorrow?
There's several companies on the western end of the county that are really soliciting, falling in because they got the capacity to carry it. I've been hearing that, I mean, they're going out, it ain't just one guy, there's a bunch that's driving by planning on the western side of the county. Because they got these major pipelines, they're really picking. So I agree with him, it probably is something you look at, some people like it, some people don't, but they're really on push.
You know, when you think of these small companies that are out soliciting property, you know, it might be great solar company, and it may be fairly new, but they're not going to be able to get a twenty billion dollar bond. They're not going to be able to, they can't do anything unless they get a contract to purchase power. So they're working with a Dominion or an A V or some major user at some point that that project gets taken over by a responsible party. So just keep that in mind too.
All right, any further discussion?
I do agree, Mr. Seitz, uh, this, I do hope self-governance does play a part in that overall operation. And I am as well as of the opinion as how much that may have to go to the planning commission as well through study on how, how much is going to be allowed in Pittsavany County. It's no longer allowed in Nakalana. So how much is going to be allowed in Pittsavany County is going to be a question that every board member is going to have to ascertain. And I said that early on with the governor, Mr. McCullough, he got a little upset with me on how much is going to be mandated to Pittsavany County. So I agree, that's something every board member is going to have to, going to have to figure out, how much is going to be enough. It's just the way it is, it's just the way it is.
All right, thank you, Mr. Seitz, for a good job. Moving right along, we're going to.
Mr. Chairman?
I think the board has two options right now.
Okay.
We can, Ms. Snaffill says that her item can hold till July. I can do the legislative committee tonight, because it's on the agenda tonight. We either adjourn now, just eat, and then do the closed sessions after the meeting. I fear if we try to do two closed sessions right now, it's going to be.
Yeah, let's just do the eggplant development closed session after dinner, and we can do the property acquisition. But we, Matt has another appointment with another board in North Carolina, in Eden, our partner.
Got you. All right. I'd be happy to read.
Go right ahead, Mr. Counsel.
Okay, we're going to bump the property acquisitions for Solid Waste Convenience Center discussion to closed session tonight after the business meeting. And right now, we will entertain a motion under eight B to discuss certain prospective business or industry, or the expansion of existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the businesses, or industry's interest in locating expanding its facilities in the community, staff contact, match to D. Rowe, legal authority, Virginia Code, Section two point two, thirty-seven, eleven, A five, subject matter projects, G four, map and a motion, purpose, discussion of prospective industry slash economic development update.
Can we see, we open this over there without having to search that and put it down here? Read that into the motion?
Yeah, and we will reopen there. It won't be caught on camera, but there's no prohibition any such thing.
Leave it over there, okay?
So I need a motion to second and vote. Right here, second.
Right here, second.
Second by Mr. Dr. Miller.
All right, all in favor? Any discussion? All right, all in favor? Thank you.